Agenda, uh, it's for the record, members, Love, Fahy, Flynn, Conti, Farrell, O'Brien, Hawey, and myself are present. We have our research council, JR Pichardo, and legislative
A.
Michelle Andre. Okay, all right, just jumping right into the agenda. Under local law, well, we don't have any minutes for approval, so let's skip that. Local laws intro, local law C 2020. Mr. Contis, you want to?
Yeah, this is just to amend the technicality code related to the Department of Administrative Services to codify a diversity training program that's exclusive of various factors that should be considered.
Okay. Thank you, and that will be going to law. That's going to law. Okay, under local laws held, we'll skip down to local law A. Mr. Contis from 2020, it was just a technical correction that was aging, it'll be a pass. Okay. On to ordinances introduced. Ordinance one twenty-one of twenty, Mr. Contis. Ordinance repealing.
No, that's not mine.
It's not?
It came from the Law Department.
Okay, all right, okay.
I thought I read the supporting.
Yeah.
And it says, it says, Mr. Contis.
I had corrections to something, I didn't draft it.
Oh.
Okay, so from law, from?
Right.
Which? Yeah, but it's not for me, but it eliminates some confusion in the city code.
Which one is it?
Okay.
This one.
Oh, okay, so six.
It's gonna be introduced by law and it's going to?
No, 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 not this one, not this one.
Committee.
Wait, are you on this agenda or are you on the active calendar?
It would be planning.
Planning?
Planning, it's.
Yeah, it should go to planning.
Okay.
It's not a rush, it's not being, it's, it just cleans up and I think it's confusing.
Oh, the ordinance introduced, not the resolution introduced, that other ordinance.
Oh, the ordinance.
Yeah, that wasn't introduced, that's.
So it's planning.
Yeah, it's going to planning.
Okay, ready, I know, I read, I read the justification of what it actually does.
Do it at the Jordan Jones meeting, reappoint.
Monday?
Is that too soon?
We're at it tonight. I don't know, but it's just better to eliminate, not have to do another meeting if we can just get it.
The thing is, I think that when we had the discussions about what was going on with the USDO,
I hear the memo did say.
We either need to potentially incorporate some of that.
There you go.
Something was.
Well, and that's, and that's part of the problem.
That for me, you can use for a while.
No, he.
Did you give us the numbers that just came out?
Yeah, I gave it to you.
You gave it to him already?
Yeah. Who else knew it came?
It's quite.
I want to say the, there's a, there was a benefit to having an annual review to then talk about whether or not there were problems in the past. And for some of those, I mean, if there had been problems in the past.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And.
Well, I can do something with that.
Well, there is no, the annual review, because chapter three oh three is not applicable and provisions in the USDO, there is no annual review. It's a revocable sidewalk permit, so it's in place until we vote. If, based on some determination from the planning department, that needs to be voted. And so the risk of nullification right now, except because our council members don't want to follow up.
So my own point is, I think that there's a little bit more to talk about there and make sure that we're comfortable with what was put in the USDO as being
Oh, wait.
effective for some of the purposes. And so I'm okay if it's revocable as long as that.
But it's not clear what the standings are, who have, it used to be if there was a complaint issue, you'd go to the city clerk.
That's completely also.
So it's not clear who you go to, so you go to the planning department.
So that's exactly my point. So then, so previously, previously, there was one complaint that was founded, they got like a hundred dollar fine and then it went up to two hundred fifty dollar fine. And a third complaint was like, you lose your privileges for the season. And I gotta tell you, that particular threat came very handy in dealing with brainies in our neighborhood. And they cleaned up their act.
Okay, so we can move on, that's gonna go to planning.
Planning.
And of course.
Because it would need a larger discussion to understand the current process.
And in any case, we're still gonna be doing, we're still gonna be doing amendments to the USDO, so this can be a part of that, that conversation when we drill down there, okay? Okay, yes, yes. Okay, ordinance, under ordinances held. Uh, ordinances held are held. Okay, on to resolutions introduced. Resolution six twenty-one twenty is Ms. Fahy's or planning's. It's gonna go to the General Services Committee. You wanna speak about it?
Yeah, well, this is, you know, we talk about this all the time, well, after that huge snowfall, we got forty-six inches, there were so, obviously a lot of, like, I don't know, Tom, I tell this in a little chat here, well, we can talk about tools. You know, they, they took a close look at this, I wasn't involved in it about two and a half years ago, and made some changes, they took away the ability to, I think what they did was a warning, and then they followed up with, after twenty-four hours, they went to review the snow, they got rid of the warning. It, it's just a huge issue in our city, a lot of people don't drive and they're supposed to walk. They're really, they're, they're given a short trip, really. So it's an equity issue, our kids cannot be expected to climb over mountains of snow when you have those huge snowfalls, and we only have one huge one this year. The American Disabilities Act requires that clear sidewalks. I just think, on top of that, there's a lot of other municipalities that are taking a closer look at what they do with their snow and coming up with various plans to do it. Some of them have designated certain pathways that they're automatically gonna clear once the snowfall is older a certain amount.
Mr. Anani.
They're doing that in Syracuse, Rochester.
A work book that I have posted went to send you that, I could get it on Khanis. That deals with that, one of the city clerks, Rochester, Syracuse.
So, and I know there's a, a lot of, you know, it's a problem with resources too, but I just think it's worth having another discussion about how we handle removing the snow from sidewalks, street corners, and bus stops, I think we need to. I think we need to get the T A more involved here.
No, this is not an agenda, this is just something she just brought.
When we had our whole discussion.
So that was gonna be twelve.
I know one of the issues which I raised was we have no natural, for measuring equitable sidewalks. So shouldn't we look at maybe rolling this into the equity agenda?
You know, that's, so that's something we should.
Because, because there, there's a total void there. It is a sidewalk even in the summertime, walkable. So, that would be my, but yeah.
All right, so that'll be going to General Services. So next resolution introduced is seven twenty-one twenty by Mr. Anani.
Giving everybody an increase.
It'll be going to planning.
Oh, she just did the adjustment.
You wanna speak?
Yeah. Just looking at what's happening in Australia and other climate issues that we've seen over the past couple of years, I believe that it's going to be a portion of this. So this resolution is calling for mobilization of state funding. What I'm hoping is to get this presentation to kind of bring attention to it. I know the administration has done a good job of making sure that property, our city-owned properties are in a vibrant condition and also, C DTA is also taking some steps to also make sure that we reduce our public footprint. So again, this is a resolution that has been passed in several cities, I think roughly probably one hundred and twenty-three cities. So again, I think that is the capital, the state race that we do.
So this is exactly the same.
Yes, that was passed in the city and other cities.
And so, and, and so the rare four clause, I was a little disappointed in like, oh, okay, so what are we gonna do? We need to be doing more, we all need to be doing more. So, this is saying the rare four clause that's.
Yes, it is, it is. And again, it's going to planning, so if you have any suggestions, just send them my way and we'll be more than happy to add. Planning, thank you.
Thank you. Next intro is eight twenty-one of twenty. Uh, that's a finance, it's a resolution consenting to the salary adjustment in Corporation Council. Would you like to make a comment about that or?
So as you may be aware, there was a position in my office, but due to my promotion, but the position that.
I think you're talking about the.
Oh, the enclosed one?
No, the first one, yeah, just the first one.
You guys know about the grant, I don't know.
Yeah, you announced.
What was that?
We've read the paper, yeah.
Right.
Right, so this position is, is fully funded by the grant for two years and it's the persons that are going to be, be doing a hundred percent code enforcement and collections, one hundred percent of the time. The goal is for the position to pay for itself at the end of the grant due to the collections, the increased collections. A lot of times we get judgments and we don't have the resources to track down people and actually enforce the judgments. So it's a huge lift and it'll be a huge help, so hopefully get someone hired as soon as possible.
Thank you.
It's our entry level salary, which is sixty-eight thousand.
Six eighty, sixty-eight, sixty. Because it's the one percent on top of the sixty.
Yeah, sixty-eight, sixty.
And this position is for two years, you say?
It's grant funded for two years.
It's gonna go to finance, but.
Oh, I mean, I have a lot of questions.
Right, no, no, go ahead, ask, we were.
Yeah, I'd rather have Rob come if you have more specific questions anyway, because Rob's gonna be directly overseeing all the code enforcement stuff and Rob is as he does apparently, so more specific, he'll, he'll be coming to the committee meeting and we can have a more thorough discussion about it.
But one, one thing, if you have generally on the grant itself, because I know we've read the papers, I think, I haven't read the papers. Is it possible to get a breakout of the grant? I mean, it's a million dollars over two years, is that five hundred thousand a year or is it? I'm not sure how, but I mean, a breakout, what each item is.
On February twenty, what, just, I think, at our caucus, Rob is coming and, um, Rob McGee, along with Sam Wells and Coates, and they're going to talk about specifically the impact of the legislation. So we can have them, yeah, but I think we can get that too.
It should exist.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure we can.
We can get a bigger presentation.
February twenty-sixth.
I think that's the date.
Any other questions, Richard?
And I know for Tom, I can raise some questions or suggestions to that, that might be used in the committee, I don't know if that's.
And I, I agree, and I, Donovan sent the email where he, yeah, where he was, I mean, I think it's interesting, again, yeah, why recreate it, so, but we could have that discussion in, in finding.
So that would find us also?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, wait a minute.
Okay.
But I do, we'd like to get a better understanding of the grant.
The break down.
The breakout, item by item, how it's been spent over what period, maybe a brief description of what the.
Do you have the grant application?
Okay, that would be great.
I'll follow up with you on that one, I'll follow.
If you would, just remind me.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you on that.
Is that through benefits or is that on town?
It does not include benefits.
That does not include the benefits?
The sixty-eight?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, oh, that's right.
None of the budgeted salaries do.
So do these resolutions provide for the transfer?
Well, we don't have to, they, we don't have to approve the transfer of the way of the benefits. It's only the salary.
Mike said I didn't have to, I'm not sure exactly.
So we'll have to ask about the benefits for those positions.
Mike said. It shouldn't be any different from.
Yeah, but you have to, you have to increase it because it's in the budget.
If it's going to collections, is there a fiscal impact?
Our resolution is number.
And then new member would be paid for social security and all that.
Yeah, but they're limiting the positions.
It wasn't much.
No, but we.
No, in current fiscal years, you're gonna, here is how you get, I mean, based on what logic here is that your collections are gonna increase so that you'll get increased revenue beyond what was budgeted.
So that'll, that'll go to finance.
We've always had a shortfall, okay?
Whether or not those increased collections will eventually be a part of the cost.
Next resolution introduces nine twenty-one nineteen, that's Ms. Fahy's on community choice aggregation, you wanna?
Yes, this is, this goes along with local law B of twenty twenty and it sets out the timeline and the outreach plan for getting the word out about community choice aggregation. And it also has the opt-out letter that we would, if we do move forward, that's something that we would have to review and approve, so, and that'll be discussed at the February twelfth meeting.
Are we gonna have copies of the outreach plan and the letter?
We do have that, that came, but we don't have the opt-out letter, I don't believe.
It's, it's in the email.
Was it? I didn't see it. All right.
It was an initial agenda email that I rescinded to you.
Okay. I didn't see the letter, but, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have a template?
And of course, that's going to planning. Next resolution, ten twenty-one twenty, finance, it's that housing services advocate position that's, that's being created that me and Richard were just speaking about, it's going to finance and we can have further discussion on it there. All, all of the legislation, the, the supporting memorandum of, of, in the packet has this information. It seems like, and not to jump on anyone, most members don't read this stuff until they, they come in, they come in and grab it from here and then they start.
My questions did go beyond what was in the supporting.
Excuse me?
My, my questions did go on beyond.
Right, I, I, no, but I, I get that, but I'm saying some members are at like ground zero. And again, not to jump on anyone, but we really need to, this stuff goes out on Fridays before the Wednesday meeting, so if, if you don't even go through the front of the legislation, if you go through those supporting memorandums, the, the gist is there.
Okay, so, so.
Except when it's not. Right, I'm, I'm not removing the responsibility of discussing it here, but I'm saying in general, it's there.
So, it just seemed like a general diss of people who ask questions.
No, 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 see, I don't, no, 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 I, I know that there's not sufficient information in these, but the general idea of what's, like, what.
So this is a standard explanation when, when.
Like what Ms. Fahy just explained, like, that stuff is in the supporting memorandum for what she just talked about, it's there.
Right.
So that was my point, and it, it's not a dig at everyone, it's, it's not, it's not a dig at anyone, I'm just saying. We need to, we need to pay more attention, all right, so.
I got the notice of the planning agenda and it had the resolutions in the supporting memorandum and it did not have the education program and it did not have the opt-out letter to it, which is why.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Which is why I'd ask for, and if you read the resolution, then you see that the obvious thing is that we are also looking at that, so I did read the resolution.
See, I think you're getting the impression that I'm, I'm talking about you when I'm not.
No, no, I thought you were talking about number.
You're the most thorough person on this, on this body, a member of this body. She is absolutely positive, so.
Now, now you're getting yourself in deeper pot water.
All right, so.
I'm not gonna take credit for that.
So that's going to finance, all right, that's it for the agenda, but we, well, no, excuse me, there are two M C's, two M C's.
I do want to know that when it comes to all these adjustments and for salaries, I do find it frustrating that we get the canned language in the resolution saying pursuant to the city charter, the council must consent to the transfer funds that affect salary totals which occur outside the budget process. Now, if you look at the adjustments that were made at the end of the year, I required them to provide a justification and comparables and other information in that end of the year, which is the kind of information that I think should always be put into these, this, oh, well, you're supposed to approve it and therefore that's the necessity for the legislation is that we need to approve a salary change. We don't need any other information about why we need to approve this salary change, why this salary change is necessary. So I just wanna point that out, we need to work on that.
Okay, thank you, Judy, so we have two M C's, one by Mr. Anani, that's eleven twenty-one.
I like that one.
Twenty, that's it, quick speed, what you got?
Can I just, his is eleven and the one.
It's twelve, fifteen should be twelve, that just came to us today.
Yeah, that one's.
I was gonna correct that when I got.
Can I have one of these that were passed down?
Yeah.
You have Anani's.
Yeah. They're Anani's right here.
No, it was me, I thought I had.
It should be twelve.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we, I mean, that, that came late, like, like after four.
Because we moved the order.
Yeah, we, yeah, we moved the order.
Okay, so, Mr. Anani, you wanna, just real quick?
Again, this is the legislative black caucus that we're about to create here in the city of Albany. The city's becoming more diverse, more diverse every month, every year, and as shown by the statistics, when you look at the percentage of African-Americans and also Hispanic individuals who are moving into our city and also is reflecting here on our city council. This legislation was introduced last year, we had to make some amendments to it, but, uh, right now, I think that it's more important than ever, particularly when you're walking around the city, people are always asking, what is the black agenda? You know, what is the Hispanic agenda? What is the minority agenda? What do we focus on? I think that this, uh, this caucus is going to be focused on addressing those matters. So again, I think that this is a step in the right direction, we've seen the county introduce similar resolution in their caucus and it's really running well, they have staff, they have issues that they fight for, they have forums that they put together, and I think that it's time for our city to also have similar actions moving forward, so.
So is there anywhere working with the county caucus on it?
Yeah, we'll be open to working with the county, with the county.
Mr. Johnson?
I clearly have something to say about this because I find it a smack in the face to our city for us to even have a conversation about something like this when people have a hard time supporting issues of the inner city. I think that, um, introducing something like this is just giving the mayor control over another avenue in our community. And I think that we have talked about this, you know, on an individual basis and people keep on pushing it because it's a lot of, I wanna run, I wanna be the first person to say that I did this. And, you know, for the fact that we're getting ready to go in here and listen to some of the stuff that we're gonna have to listen to, it's a smack in the face when the things that are going on in our community are continuously overlooked and never addressed. So sit down as a group and say, because it's X a number of African-Americans, this is the best thing to do for a caucus.
We'd say?
We're gonna have a committee meeting here or are we gonna?
No, yeah, no, we're gonna, then we'll go to council.
This is the point that I was making last week about when people have a chance to speak here, you know, he does that every time. And when he spoke, I listened and, you know, and this is just, you know, I have to make sure that this is said because when the issues are brought up, there's never any support of the issues that's brought up and when other issues are brought up, it's just a lot of support for those issues. And like I said, in the inner city, we have the same stuff that's been going on and on and over and over and we never really hear anything to truly address it unless it's a dire circumstance. You know, I've been sitting and listening to reasons and it's all about a new city, what about the current residents? So this right here, like I said, is a smack in the face.
Okay, so it sounds like you don't support it, so, but anyways, it's gotta go to committee.
Thank you.
Would that go to council operations, Richard? Yeah, okay, so that's where it's going.
And I just want to say something to be very clear.
Right, are we gonna have the?
No, but I gotta respond to that.
You don't have to respond to it, you don't have to respond to it.
Okay, but I think that is important, I mean, so you just have ten minutes to talk about.
You, you started this out, I don't, I don't wanna be me, all right, so stop, please.
We have thirty minutes.
Next, uh, resolution.
We have thirty, when is this?
When we're done, we're going in there, we're not gonna rush through this. So do you wanna speak to your M C? Our next M C's gonna be twelve, twenty-one, twenty. It's before you there, all right, it's on the salary adjustment in the Law Department.
It says fifteen, but it's actually twelve.
It's twelve, right, you gotta.
So today I made, uh, the person I made an offer to come to the Law Department accepted the position, I'm not bringing someone in at the level, but that is the only line I have in my budget due to my promotion. So I basically needed to lower that salary and then I took whatever, it wasn't that much, that was left over and I boosted the two lowest pages that we have in our office by three thousand dollars each. And then I took, I don't know, it's gonna be a meeting, but then I took the other five thousand dollars and gave it to one of our administrative staff who's gonna take on a managerial role. She's gonna start overseeing the other three administrative assistants in our office. So I thought of boosting salary was appropriate, she's been here for twenty years.
Yeah.
We don't have any information about the total salaries and there's a reference to an attachment A that we don't have?
No, I have to say.
I think the chart is attachment A, but it was incorporated in?
Yeah, I incorporated it, that's my fault.
So what is the low K?
But it doesn't give the salary total.
Sixty-eight, six eighty, it's the lowest, it's in the budget. That's the lowest paid salary. Sixty-eight, six eighty. That's the lowest attorney.
You're not looking at that.
Where's going to committee, this is going to finance.
Yeah, so I'll come back when you're in committee.
Can we get salary totals for, put in, into this and can you also put the justification back? And, and eliminate the reference to attachment A, thank you.
K R, we pay you more than that, right?
No. No? I'm actually paying less on the lowest page.
Because they got a one percent.
Okay, so that's it for the regular agenda, any, right, any questions, comments?
Mr. Hall.
And maybe it's too soon to bring it up because, but I think you all watched the news and know what's going on in China right now. When I saw the emergency, you know, talk in the U S's resolution, they even think about, oh, we, is the city claiming, you know, if something happened, but this virus comes here, because this could be pandemic. You know, a hundred years ago, we had the swine flu coming, it killed fifty million people around the world and the population was one level. So, you know, is that something we should talk about in the future, you know, what we would do or?
Well, that's county health department, you know.
So that'd be more of a county problem, not a city.
Yeah, we don't have a health department.
But there could be a disaster preparedness thing, I mean, I, I think that would fall underneath disaster preparedness, you know?
We can, we can include that in our next leadership meeting, planning.
I think law enforcement, police and fire do have protocols for that.
I just have to say, I have a little bit of experience with that, I spent the last two days trying to get my daughter out of Guilin, China. I spent the last two days trying to get my daughter out of Guilin, China. She'll be home on Saturday and so, trust me, I...
Oh, my gosh. Is that near, is that near the epicenter or do you just...
No, it's not near the epicenter. It's like out in the country, but she's gotta go back to the airport where everything, you know, where all the issues are. Sorry, I think Mr. Conti has another question.
I just wanna make sure that the permit parking, for those members that have permit parking zones in their wards, you realize that they're going through renewal period right now. Everybody knows everything, but the current permit expires February 15. You want quickly updating, and I have another, what we're doing forward, but...
So I guess this is problematic. Before I get the renewal, there was this time because we were transitioning from one system to another. I've been having conference calls with the vendor and calling them every three days. So right now, as we stand on January 22nd, they sent an email reminder out to let people know to expect a letter. The letters are gonna follow shortly. And I'm also gonna blur on the city's webpage, the very first page, because I find you have to touch people three times in order to get a response. So hopefully we'll have positive responses. If you have issues with constituents in your respective wards, if they call me, you know, we do everything that we can to make things right for people. There's some other things that we're working on, the verification process, but we'll be very responsive.
And the other part of it is, this is the year where we also have to go back in the state legislature to get reauthorization of our current system. And so I think we're trying to keep people in the loop who have permit and one-to-one in terms of what we're looking for this year. So there is a bill has been introduced in the Assembly, maybe by the Senate right now, but it's supposed to be in both houses. That's gonna require a home rule message. It does three things. It would, it seeks to make the current system permanent, so we don't have to go back every two years. It's no longer like a pilot system. It seeks to expand the radius within which we can do a zone from 3/4 mile to a mile. And that will deal with some issues out in the western part where Uso is and Alfredo and Julia, she wants it. So that we will have some flexibility to deal with issues there, like where Suni is doing their expansion, for example. There are a lot of issues there and some others. And we'll also add, we're also asking for 750 additional spaces. And that will give us some flexibility for existing areas, like I know where Joyce is, and some opportunities to hopefully try to address some issues where you are. And also I know there's some other areas. You have where, in the Sheraton Hall, where you're addressing that area, where we... Yeah, because I think there's some interest in doing something there. And if we can only do something there if we get more spaces, so that would... So that's gonna require a home rule resolution. So something, it's not gonna get this company meeting, but you know, there will be a home rule resolution coming down at some point. So we try to deal with existing...
Thanks, Richard. Meeting adjourned.